Put it there. Hold on, Mike, Mike put that one in there? I heard he's got two other lots sold. And then I've heard that one guy went and talked, he wants to buy two lots together, so I don't know what he's planning on building.
Morning, September seventh. Welcome to Steel Colony Commission.
Call the Steel County Park Board meeting to order. Everybody had a chance to. I'll go through any additions first, any agenda additions or anything? Seeing none, we'll move on. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes. Any corrections or errors? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move.
Is there a second? There's been a motion on the minutes and seconded, it is all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. Oh wait, next is Jake update, but I don't see him yet. Uh, let's just move on to the Golden Lake project that emergency shelters. I don't know what's going on there, is it the, is it the COVID or? I haven't heard nothing on from them guys.
I think they're just waiting for us to do the order. We're gonna talk to Ben last. But I think at the county level, we were gonna maybe wait till next year with more funds available. Or if uh. Maybe with our pull tabs, maybe we can check that fund and see.
You were wondering about the Reinhardt.
Bolt, it is their property?
It was.
Do we own that now? So we can put in the north end.
Where are they gonna go?
Well, one would be on the, we were talking to the north end of the store where the Bolt Trailers park. Then one somewhere on the west side. Maybe by the pavilion or in that area or something.
So does the, does the county own like the pavilion area too over there Emily? But that's leased from the game and fish. So you'd probably have to get approval from them or?
I don't know. And we don't get approval for anything else, but. That lease is up to thirty-two.
I haven't heard any more either on the, the water project, they haven't, haven't heard nothing on anything that's going on there.
I think there was some uh, bad LG out there, a lease still, I think everybody heard that.
Yeah, White or Jake came in and got some, some of the signs that we needed to post. And then Wayne went out there the next day also to make sure that they were all. Posted properly, but haven't gotten updates since from them.
I think the water's gotten better since we had this little bit of rain, it's not, it's still green, but it's not that really blue-green like it was.
I did see Jake's done with his regular hours for the summer and now he's gonna go to some Fridays and Saturdays.
Yep, gonna try that.
That LG if uh, if it's kind of on one end of the lake. Does it mean the whole lake shut down, or is it, can you go on the other end of the lake?
Think they advised this no swimming.
To stay out of it?
Yeah, Jake was gonna make, like you said, though they put a couple more, there's two electronic pull tab machines in there now too that are. But. I talked to him a little bit the other night and he didn't, he was gonna come in and there's a few who's. Gonna pull all the equipment out again. And clean the floor good and seal it again, he said there's a couple loose tiles, he's gonna replace them, he said. And then like you said, start Fridays and Saturdays, just to see how it's gonna go. Other than that, I don't know what else he'd had.
Suppose all those projects outside with the skirting around the, all that stuff he wants done too, doesn't he?
He's got it all done or not yet?
He pops in once in a while to have menus printed, but. Uh, he said he did all the dirt work end of it and he was gonna talk to Rodney and see if he could do any of it. Now that the.
Yeah, yeah, dig some of it up.
I didn't think Rodney wanted to do anything out there, did he?
Well, that's mostly because of that dirt work and stuff, that part of it, what he told me, so. Jake will just have to visit us him and see, so.
Anything else that anybody can think of? Think he's had a pretty good year out there.
It's good.
When do you want the docs spooled or?
I'm sure he's probably leaving in the whole month of October.
No, September, you mean?
We're gonna be hiding in deep and snowing off cover.
Better not be.
So Jake was fine. Well, I don't think there's.
I don't think there's anything else, I guess. Pretty short meeting today, yeah?
West side, I suppose we should talk to the game and fish about putting that shelter over there.
Yeah, I suppose.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have one of them at both sides. Trying to figure out what requires that. I believe our cost was twenty grand or so, our share, twenty-five maybe, can't remember off top.
Yeah, we'll have to check, like they said, Dennis never said, well, we got the account in there.
Well, you don't really have, you don't really have nothing in the account. It's all in a, there's a trust fund and there's a civic fund. And then you can only give away the money out of a.
I'm doing today.
I don't remember now if it's a civic or the trust. And all you gotta do is put in uh, the application for what's going on. I'm on the board too, so that we just, you know, prove or disprove and you know, go. It's gotta be a pretty worthwhile project before, you know, we'll do anything.
Right.
Stuff, so, but. There's a lot of money in that account and stuff, so.
Are we figuring only two of them emergency shelters?
I think it was, yeah. I think they hold like a.
Thirty-five or one twenty-five?
One twenty-five, I think was a piece or something like that, that old.
Cause there's a spots on the south end, on the east side too there that. Couldn't be a bad spot for one.
Be better probably to have it over by pavilion though, cause you got a lot of, a lot of campers right along that side up there, you know, rentals and all that. Be a lot of people that get there in a hurry then from there.
Well, I would keep one by the pavilion no matter what, but. North of the trailers and south of, south end would kinda like. Yeah. Just about around the whole thing, so you know.
All right.
But do we own that land west of the drainage area through there?
You're okay, James.
I don't have anything else, see nothing else, there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor signify aye. Pose same sign. Meeting adjourned. Sure and sweet. Thanks guys.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll go back to the Steel Colony Commission at eight oh nine. Uh, is there any agenda additions? If not, approval. We gotta change to the minutes. Third page. Third page down at the end when we were talking about vents. Raise, I'd like that word substantial cut out of there. So it's just gates requested raises. It's pretty subjective when you say substantial. Third page bottom paragraph. Everybody taking a look at that? Any issues with that? Go ahead and take that out.
Make a motion with the amendment.
Motion made by Brian, do a second.
Oh, second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Pose.
That's with the special meeting too? I don't know if it's fine.
Motion carried. Going back to agenda additions, was there any more agen- agenda additions? Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
All motion.
Motion made by Brandon, second.
Still move.
Second by Russell, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Good, we'll talk about lights.
I almost hear, and did all of that rewire. Um, it is slightly better, it's, you know, resolved itself when it um, rained. The last several rains, it did. It did flicker a lot worse. You know, that's due to wiring here or somewhere else.
I wonder if that's how.
That's the update though.
We think that'd be an external building, something that's an issue, right?
Text him about it in those days and he didn't, he didn't respond at all, so.
Do we have more colors to put on those or, I don't remember if it was being broken, but.
No, they weren't. We do not, regardless of. We have, you know, looked for some. But yeah, all four of them.
When it was before uh, doing that, it wasn't raining though, right?
So is it still? Half bound or? Was it just the lights that flicker or is there a computer like that?
Just like that.
That's all it does? What do you guys wanna do? Is it just because of the bulbs that they do that, or I'm not electrician, so I don't know. Did it do it before? So, let's talk to Tyler and see if he's got any more suggestions or?
Yeah, I suppose. Didn't he change bulbs and everything, stuff too, he thought it was a bad batch of bulbs?
I thought so, didn't, yeah.
Well, we might be going down a rabbit hole with that too, so. Have to see what you think with the LEDs in there, what's.
Yeah.
Take as much power.
Well, then they even re-wired, you know, certain areas and stuff too, just for that purpose now, so.
Well, that's what he did, didn't he put another circuit in this area?
The old wiring in here, I don't. I think we got, talk to Tyler and discuss it a little bit, see. See what else.
Okay, is somebody gonna talk to Tyler about that? Uh, twenty twenty census.
I sent out information, preliminary information to all of you, I'm not sure if you guys looked at any of that or not, or any questions. We do not have any of the census tracts yet, they're expecting that um, the week of the fourteen. So once those come out, I'll be able to um, calculate the different districts and see what, where our next step will be with that.
Hard for me to believe we lost that hundred seventy-some people, that was. A hundred thirty-some. Walk downtown in the middle of the day and seems like there's more people than I've ever seen before in my life.
Just around the new home blocks too. We'll see, Marcy will be involved, I'll contact her once we get to the next portion. To see. Somebody will, they all know it's gonna be you or if you guys, at your board meeting, you discuss it, somebody else, but somebody will be. A representative for the city on the red script day.
Uh, salary survey court, I, I did talk to Commissioner from Trail County, they got a estimate. They put in their budget, they, they have not ordered one yet. Um, that was the info I got from him, but Emily, you talked and got a quote?
Yeah, well, I just said they have set aside around thirty thousand for Trail for next year. Um, everything so far is research that covers the, throughout the state and other counties herself. Um, Amy and I did sit down, like, have a web meeting with a company that Trail County. referred us to uh, for that and they thought it was absolutely doable. Pretty easy and standard, um, couldn't get it done by the end of the year. However, they not, as of yet emailed me the price. Checked out the from twice last week and they were gonna get it before today and. As soon as I can see that vote, I'll go to the non-people's.
So what is the rundown of that? What are they, what are they gonna do? They're going to. Structurally look at.
Look at the positions, the duties of the positions, the years of service and comparable to our. Duties and.
Are they gonna base it off population? For colonies that we're gonna look at?
They've done several counties within North Dakota already. Um, smaller counties, larger counties. So, and they compare it based on both travel to Bono or, you know, to get other people. So, they'll have the, the. Scope of work and everything when the quote comes on it for you also. If you'd like to sit down, we have a conference with them, if you guys have specific things you'd like. Um, special attention paid to or focus on. For the parameters, they're, we're willing to do that also.
If that's something we decide to do, that's, we need to. You know, take that and then set some kind of structure in place.
I don't know if I'm too anxious to spend thirty thousand dollars on a. Survey, but I, I.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm. We, we can look at this all many ways we wanna look at it, you know, we can also. Just. Forget about it too then.
Well, I, I don't really need to forget, but I. Just a lot of money, I, I think we.
Oh, I, I agree. It's something we can work out. You know. In-house or?
On their quote, it's gonna say, he said it's gonna give you the parameters of what they're gonna do for the money. So, I think we take a look at that first before we make our decision.
Well, Trail County is thirty thousand and we're. One-fourth of what, what they are, so hopefully the price is justified into. Population wise too, you know?
So we'll see what happens next month for the court and see where they come back to.
I'll send it out, yeah, as soon as I get it and you guys can. Hopefully someone will respond that you're receiving information. Yeah, if you have any questions on it, or you want their contact information. To contact them and reach out directly, I can give you that also.
Do we think we're way off? I mean, way off or?
Brandon?
I do, on some positions, yes.
Higher, low?
For the scope of work. My personal opinion. For a county of eighteen hundred people. And my other thing is, is we don't have a structure in place to. Okay, so either time spent or moved around or however. Training involved, there's just, it's just, while we're, and whether that's lack of information on our side or, or whatever. There's just no. Structure tiered off because where's the cap at, like I, like I said the last time? We're, we're, do we cap out at a hundred grand for everybody? You know?
No, I, I, I agree, I mean, it's, maybe it's something that we need to take a look at every five, eight years or something like that, you know? We look at it now and see how far off we really are.
And maybe we're not, I mean, maybe I'm just thinking that, but I, I dig back through some of this stuff. And I just. Personally, me, there's just, I need some structure to it, because otherwise I, I feel like they're just. The people who, you know. Were trying to get, I understand we're trying to fill the positions too. But also I look at the scope of the county and, and how, how big we are. And how small we are. And the salaries we're paying. And also you gotta add in, which never gets really sort of talked about, is the benefit package that rolls along with it. I mean, it's huge, it's, it's, it's a good place to work. So. Personally, for me, that's, it's just. To get it set, you know, however we gotta do it, I'm no personnel guru by no means, but. Get some structure in place, all right, you've been here five years, this is the next stage here. Been doing a good job, or however we, we structurally look at that. Um, maybe even separate, uh, elected to employees also. Maybe a huge undertaking, but. Something that I feel is important. Where when we get to go, you know, the taxpayers do look at this, you can explain it. Cause there's some stuff in here that, when I look through the budget stuff, I, I, and whatever, I wasn't here either, but it's hard to explain. You're just looking at numbers on it. So.
Well, I think we're in a, this is off that subject, but social services is gonna be. The state is getting that all goofed up again, thirty-one with nine districts. It's not working, you got guys quitting on different areas and you wait, we're gonna get sucked up. More than just Trail County. It's just getting close. She's already down in Fargo, Kim is, two of them, because there's issues down there. And why they can't handle their own down, cast downs by themselves. It's not a good idea.
Well, I think gonna get that salary code stuff, we'll go from there and see what it costs and. Sign of whether we wanna proceed or not, you know?
And the other caveat to that is, is that we, it may be underpaying people.
Yeah, true.
Well, the other thing is, uh, we're. You know, I agree with you, we should take a look at it because it probably needs to be, but. We also are a different situation than bigger counties too that. You know, in the end of the day, we're in Finley, North Dakota, and getting people to move into a rural area to work is tough. It is, so we have to weigh that part of it too. But I, I do like the fact that it's probably not a bad idea, cause I've been on the commission for. Twelve years now, or no, ten years now, or whatever it was, but uh, we've never really taken a look at it, so. I like that idea too. And like you said, yeah, it could go the other way, so.
Absolutely.
Let's see where we're at.
It would suggest maybe having the employees update their job descriptions of what they are currently doing. Um, we do have some, but that was probably eight, nine years ago at least, um. Maybe that, some don't need updating, but some probably do, yeah. And then maybe if I sent those out to you guys, you know, that might be a good idea for you to get an idea of what people. Actually do.
Yeah, I agree.
Their positions. Is that something anybody wants done or?
That would be good.
I see you guys are gonna start original hours or normal hours, I guess, September seventh?
Right. Today. So.
The, there was a minor injury, workplace injury?
Yes.
That?
Um, no medical attention was needed, but we report things, it was a beef thing by an employee that have been bad this year, but we track it and report it case something down, you know, the next day, two days, there's a medical issue with it. Um, that way we have our reporting, um, requirement met for that.
Any issues up shop or anything with guys, I mean, as far as?
Not that I'm aware of, no, that's just the only issue we had for last month.
Reed will be gone today, his dad's not doing too good, but Tim will be in there.
Okay.
Um, the conferences still going on?
Conference is still going on, um.
I wondered about that.
As far as I know, so I did go ahead and register. Uh, you, if you wanted to be registered.
Yep.
You're registered, Richard's registered, Brandon's registered. Hotels are met, our DOT meeting is scheduled for, um, ten thirty on Monday. And that works out after the, um, presenter for Monday morning during a break time. Not too much wait time in between those two, so that is good, um.
Did we set our October meeting for the twelfth?
We did.
Then.
Any updates, anyone not going?
I'm not.
You're not?
Nope.
I will go ahead and cancel your room.
So what's the conference actually cost, just straight out?
Fifty per person with hotel? Miley?
At least ballpark, yes.
Might, sure.
Um, NDACO website. The conference itself is two hundred and sixty dollars per person.
Okay. I think I'll pass on this here too.
We have not heard anything regarding Aurora and that nomination, that's usually mid-September, so hopefully in the next week or two, we'll hear something on that.
Yep. So, there'll just be Ted and I going? You're going?
Yep. I haven't, I'm still in the area, so we'll see, it'll probably be the last minute thing for me.
I won't register you then, I'll just wait and hold your hotel for now?
Yeah, I'll let you know like a week in advance, but, uh, I just, I got so much shit going, I got so much stuff thrown on me.
Let you, we'll grab Dennis.
Hi Dennis.
Morning.
You're just in time. You can sit at the end of the table.
Right at the end of the table. You even got a mic right in front of you.
I'll meet that.
Dennis, you wanna give us a update?
Well, last month was probably one of the slower months we've had, you know, as far as the vet ban goes. I guess nobody wanted to go to the hospital, this month it picked up again. And we've already had five rides and we got pretty much booked for the rest of the month. And on the fourteenth, we're in a different calendar year, fiscal year than you guys are, ours ends on the fourteenth of September. And we start our new year on the fifteenth of September. So, so this year we've probably spent about thirty-five thousand of our fifty thousand. We're running in good shape.
Good. Good business.
Out at the lake, that's up there, we're probably still over here the park board, you know?
We, yeah, that meeting went pretty fast.
We would, uh, you know, we put the machines in out there. For the two months of, uh, May and June, we took in about eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, paid out nine thousand forty dollars. So far this quarter, we've taken in fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And paid out ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And I just put the E tab machines in out there two weeks ago, maybe, whatever. I haven't got really a feel on that, we're still behind on that, though, we should come out on that.
Like to spend money, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
All over.
Yeah.
That May, June, you said, what did you pay off?
Uh, pay, May, June, we paid on nine thousand and forty dollars. So, profit of twenty, well, it ain't quite a profit, but twenty-eight ninety-four. And through to now through this month so far, we paid out ten thousand eight hundred and eighty.
So how much is approximately? Do we have those last year, those machines? Little bit, not much.
Get for a month or two. Yeah, it was just a little bit there, but it wasn't very long, I, I don't have that figure with me.
Do you know approximately how much is in that account, so?
Well, it's all, it all has to stay in, it all has to stay in the Finley Improvement Association account. And well, Russell know, there's a lot of money in there.
So we have to make an application to
Right.
The projects that we.
Right, I got forms that you just fill out, you know, the association, there's a part board you fill out.
So, we were gonna do a storm shelter project out there, and I think the project is twenty or twenty-five thousand?
Okay.
Do we have enough to cover that? You probably fill out the test. Don't you think, Russell?
Could review it and see, yeah.
Right.
Get some actual numbers, go from there, you know?
Okay.
Well, Stu Gullicks is on that board.
Who's?
Stu Gullicks, Heidi Walzwick, Cammy Dahl, myself and Dennis.
Yeah. So is there certain projects that we can do with, without money or?
Uh, as long as it was for the park board, I don't think we'd have any problem.
Yeah.
I mean, unless they're way off, I think you.
Sure. Good.
I'll get one, but I don't have my.
Okay, any, anything else Dennis, or any questions Dennis, for Dennis?
We're working on the elevator.
Yep, they had projected at least four months.
Uh-huh.
And it's not four months yet, we signed the contract with them in May, so.
I mean, just to get the veterans up and down and, and having, kind of, if I have somebody, I'll usually meet them downstairs, I've, I think I have tried to stare at them.
Let's be close though, isn't it?
And September's four months, so.
And it's September?
I don't remember. I got my.
Have they been here yet?
Huh?
They've been working on it?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Nothing? Have we reached out to them at all, or?
I didn't.
Last JDA meeting, Keith asked about it, Keith Iger was there also, and I was surprised, but he gave him the script, but they made it down the steps.
There's always the option to maybe use that other conference room on the first floor.
Well, I had that, I have you that, or I have you in Andy's office or something. Just trying to meet with them.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well.
Appreciate it, up there.
No problem.
Thanks Dennis.
Thank you Dennis.
Thank you Dennis.
Thanks Dennis.
Yep.
So, I just received a text that Wayne will not be coming today, he is sick. And Charlie just texted that he's on the meeting with Trail, he should be down in ten minutes or so. Jake did finally respond back, he wasn't going to make it today, he has some spamming item going on.
Okay. Um.
So Sheriff, was the other HR department update for this month?
Kind of gone through the the agenda pretty fast this morning.
Yep.
Not a lot of people here.
No.
Um, so just a update again. The water board requested to, um, postpone their portion, if you guys have questions for them, I can just email or text Tasha, she said they'd be happy to come answer them, if you guys have anything for them, but otherwise they, if you guys wanna reschedule it or do it in November, December for another update for the water board, but with Greg being out and everything, they would like to just.
I think it's fine if we reschedule.
November or whatever.
Yep.
November?
Yep.
What's the sheriff got?
What's that?
What's Beckman got?
Beckman's sick, so I don't know, he won't be coming, they don't know.
You don't know what his problem is or what his deal is?
No. I, I don't know what anyone's up to these days. I, I don't know, maybe Carly does, she might wanna give you a department update.
Yeah, she's in that department.
I just threw you under the bus, but you would wanna do a department update since Wayne's here.
She doesn't want to.
Hey. Is it? I talked to Wayne last week one day and I just asked him if they're busy, but they were, they said they've been very busy this summer now. I don't know how many are in jail that we're paying for right now, but so he's been busy.
I see on those razor reports, boy, there's a lot of speeding and harsh braking, how do you get harsh braking? You slam on the brakes that?
That could be just set up that if you're driving fifty-five, sixty-five miles an hour, you hit your brakes.
Yeah, I don't know.
Who knows what the parameters are, how that
Yeah, I don't know.
Stuff is set up, but.
Must be really sensitive.
Yeah.
In order for, cause it's always harsh braking, harsh braking on everybody. Even on Ben, on his V S vehicle and everything else, I think you actually, on that vehicle do was there's something, and it's harsh braking at this. Yeah. There's a lot of speeding.
Driving too fast.
Speeding that was like a hundred and ten miles an hour or something like that, oh, yeah, there's a lot of that. Yeah.
The other portion of that is, is if you ever go ride with them guys one night and run traffic with them, you'll understand why.
Yeah.
Why do you do that?
Yeah.
Catch up to a car, if you're, if you're running traffic, you harsh brake and you speed to get caught up to the car, so. Yeah. What I plan to do too is go for ride with the boys one night and check it out too, so.
No, I don't want to. I don't wanna go that fast.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a little adrenaline rush, Russell.
Well.
I'm sure you're carving out every muscle out.
Yep.
It's hours of boredom with moments of terror.
That's exactly how it goes.
Yep.
So, we're, we're being on mic.
Want to discuss anything with the budget? Um, the public budget meeting tomorrow at six o'clock, um. If we have several members of the public that cannot be accommodated in this room, um, we will.
Upstairs?
No.
Basement?
I can't move the equipment up the stairs or down the stairs myself, so the elevator's not working, what I plan to do is have chairs and we'll move it out to the hallway if we have to.
Okay.
So that there's more room. We can do that, that thing's way too heavy to get up or downstairs right now, so.
But we can roll it out.
We can roll it out there, yes, I just can't bring it to a different level unless you wanna have the guys here.
Not without the elements, so.
So.
Yeah, we don't want to jam in there.
That will come down and there's a tripod up there that I can move and set it out there, but yeah, just a couple technical issues different from last year with that budget meeting, so.
Tomorrow night.
Um. The budget meeting will start, I'll just go through the difference in the levies and what that equals for taxes, um.
I'll be sure to bring my.
I'll have the mill levy sheet.
I'll bring my book tomorrow night.
Bring your books, yeah. Um, mill levy sheet for all the township, schools, all of that, the different districts, um, present for them, and then you guys can discuss, answer questions, however you wanna proceed with that, normally is how it goes. There's not a time requirement to be here for a certain amount of time or.
Well, we haven't had a lot of people before come.
We have not, no, um.
Three years.
What?
Not saying that we won't.
We had one minor issue with Carrie said that one of the districts, when she printed it, um, had, she had the wrong meeting information in there, so that was the what'd she say, Hatton got Northwoods or Northwood got Hatton's information, vice versa, for the school districts when she did them. Um, and then the press, I don't know why, but the press ran Monday, September eighth for the meeting.
Yeah, I saw that, no.
Yeah. But the notices were right.
Yep.
So. And that is probably, I mean, I can't blame Carrie one bit, that she has to manually enter every district for every statement notice like that, so I could see how it would be easy to have that happen with all the different meetings and districts and looking over the numbers, so that full mill levy sheet that I gave you guys, um, with the townships and everything that we have, each one of those lines, she has to enter separately and run those statements for that district. Um, so it's quite time consuming.
Uh, not to change the subject or anything, but, uh, did Chad talk to you or set up a meeting with you on credit card?
Who?
Chad Iberly?
No.
He jumped me the other day about, uh, that when they switch over to their new system, the new bank, that they'd be able to provide this to.
P card?
Yeah. The way he sounded, so. Said instead of, uh, paying JP Morgan, somebody that would never see benefits of, he said we could go through them and cause they give back to the city county all the time, so.
Mm-hmm.
But he said he was gonna talk to you and set up a meeting, so.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be better utilized in the calendar.
This lady from S U, she's coming?
She should be, I was gonna email her and let her know if she's around, we could get her in, literally if she wished.
And you stay over there, then? Till the end of the month, or till the fifteenth, he starts the fifteenth in Fargo, I don't.
Something like that, yeah.
Like that, yeah.
Or sixteenth or whatever.
Yeah. According to that thing I got.
Just another quick update too, last week, we received, uh, I received a phone call from John Irie about, uh, the ditch that I would sort of speed over there right by the elevator.
Yeah.
And, uh, wanted it buried for whatever reasons that it was done in the first place, get all that water out of there.
Well, boys are up there work?
Yep. So, agreed, uh, met with John, and they got a plan and, and, uh, buried the dunes with John there. Request of Johnny, so. So you guys know that?
Right, and they had hoped them.
Yeah.
One day I saw that the backhoe was out there in the heat order when I went in and found something.
So they were able to backfill those two? Yes. That, that's, that's all he wanted.
Dryness.
I, I don't know what else, what he wants to farm on the other side there, so. Get it all worked up. So they figured out a plan and got it taken care of, so.
So that triangle's all dry completely?
It is dry, pretty darn dry, driest time. Got all the cat tail mode out of there and everything, I mean.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
Pretty good, then?
Yes.
She'll definitely wet. A few years ago. Yeah. It'll probably come back.
But didn't Mike always say that the stakes got lower?
Yeah.
Is Eric Culver in order for the water to actually run out of that?
Yeah.
Maybe if they redid the road and that never happened, so.
No.
So we dug it over there, and then they pumped the water over.
Yeah.
Looks like our inmates for July was five thousand bucks, that's a lot of money. Way more than we spent on the previous.
Well, Wes, inmates. Tough year, tough summer.
Where are they, at Hillsborough now, or Grand Forks? So Hillsborough's not taking them anymore yet, or?
I don't know if they are yet. Boy, uh, two thousand dollars going up for weed control.
Well, the, we, I see we paid a whole bunch of townships for FEMA twenty-twenty. Looks like we're paying them, well, it needs to be, work needs to be completed yet. Thought we paid them when the work was done.
We normally do. I don't, that's Ben's question.
I get, there here's something that says work completed, and then work to be completed. Thought we got in trouble one time paying electric before they were done.
Yeah, I agree. I think we did.
Pretty big number.
I got a text.
Ben.
Is he here?
Yeah.
Okay, he says. He has a sheet showing that most been completed.
Always responding to the FEMA.
The vouchers we have are all completed work. These are all completed?
Yeah.
You sure, when you go through these, you can sure tell it's close to water, I mean, as far as lakes or rivers and stuff. Oh, is there a sheet here?
Since it's numbers. I had to look, I can't see far away. Um. You guys are kind of, I mean, we have a new member on the board, but, um, I know Ben has come, and before any out-of-state travel was always approved by the board. So, uh, I know Catherine's going to a convention next year. And I think maybe Aurora, um, in New Orleans, those are in your bills for Revi also. She's not here today, she's in Bismarck for.
Who is?
Catherine.
No.
So.
Didn't she mention that to us early last meeting, or?
I'm on if you have questions.
For tobacco conference?
I don't remember, I guess.
Can you hear me? I'm on if you have questions.
Is she talking?
Are you talking, Catherine?
I'm trying to, can you hear me?
No, I can't.
She doesn't listen.
Can you hear me now?
Still getting gravel out of Baldwin pit, huh? A little bit. Well, we, uh, should we talk about some budgets? Come on.
Can you hear me now?
Well.
Hello?
I have to break down, haven't done it. Amy. It's got a bitch. What you heard?
Ben says you can hear me.
Hang on, Catherine, I'm gonna sign in here, I should be able to hear you from my computer. Um, since we're discussing issues with our recording, Travis came and installed, uh, and got us a subscription for WebEx, um, that we'll be moving to next month. It was after the notice went out for this month's meeting, but if any of you looked at or listened to the meeting from last month online on our website, um, we had a video uploaded, and it just basically won't finish uploading the last portion of our meeting, um, from last month, the video part of it. Um, Travis couldn't really figure out why, there's a disconnect between the sound and the video part of, it's a few seconds off, so he thinks over the very long meeting last month, that it got separated by seconds and wouldn't fully upload. We did upload all of the audio, we're able to do that. Um, but he believes it is a WebEx issue.
Yeah.
So we're gonna try Zoom next month.
Morning. Good morning, hi.
Morning.
Uh, we have Leslie here.
Morning.
How are you today?
Good.
Good.
Morning. Kinda neat, is it okay if we do introductions?
Yes.
I'd like to.
I'm Brian.
Brian?
Right, we, city of Finland.
Okay.
Brandon Kurgur. Old.
Yeah, Angie.
Yeah, I met you at Performance Reviews.
Richard Stram.
Richard, okay.
Russell Walker.
Okay, nice to meet you. Okay, so I am on the agenda to talk to you about the extension office today. As you guys know, Angie is moving on to Fargo here on September fifteenth, is her, I believe her last day in the county.